It is now 7:02 in time for our regularly scheduled Beloit City Council meeting at 100 State Street, Beloit, Wisconsin, in the City Hall Forum, Monday, August 20, 2012. First item is call to order and roll call. Madam Clerk?
Roll call shows all councilors present except for Kevin Levy.
Item number two is pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Virginia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is special orders of the day and announcements. We have none today. Item number four is public hearing. 4A. Madam Clerk?
A public hearing and proposed ordinance amending the City of Beloit Comprehensive Plan for 220 and 250 Garden Lane. The Plan Commission recommended approval, six to zero.
Ms. Christensen.
Jager Bay has requested two amendments to the future land use plan map for 220 Garden Lane from single-family residential urban to community commercial, and that 220 Garden Lane is the parking lot, and then for 250 Garden Lane from office to community commercial. On April 16, they came forward and applied for rezoning of 250 Garden Lane from PLI to C1, which was consistent with the comp plan at that time. I think they told Plan Commission and City Council that the long-term goal was to try to have the comp plan amended to be community commercial so that they could be rezoned to C3 because their future plans were more than the C1 uses. Plan Commission did hold a public hearing to consider the requested amendments on July 18, and they voted unanimously to adopt the resolution, which is included in your packet, which would recommend approval of the amendments to the comprehensive plan. If approved, they would still need to come back through this, through a zoning process to rezone it to C3. This does not rezone the property. This just changes the land use on the future land use plan. Under state law, you're required to, any zoning actions are required to be consistent with the comp plan, so this is really the first step they have to take in order for council to even consider a rezoning of these properties. And Plan Commission did unanimously recommend approval. There were no concerns requested by, or suggested by Plan Commission about the uses in C3 for these particular properties.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come forward and speak on item 4A? Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Klobbs. My address is 4211 South 122nd Street in Greenfield, Wisconsin. I am a managing member for Jager Bay Properties, and we own the lots of 250 Garden Lane and 220 Garden Lane, and I'm the application, applicant for the comprehensive plan change. I know that I met, I came for the Plan Commission meeting in March of this year, and then for the City Council meeting for the C1 zoning. I spoke at that time stating that we did want to proceed forward with getting C3 zoning, if possible, due to the second floor of the old Rat County Courthouse. They were the courtrooms. So, our long-term goal from the time we purchased the property in 2007 was to utilize that second floor as event space. Event space meaning just about anything you could pretty much think of that was reasonable, that people might want to utilize it for, for seminars, or business meetings, weddings, kids' events, community events, markets, like craft fairs, or things like that. And so, we, we had talked to a lot of people over the last five years, well, four years, I should say, and last year, we really started moving forward to the point where we knew that we wanted to go through with getting the property rezoned, because we needed to rezone it in the first place, because it was PLI, to at least office use, to be able to have anybody move in there for anything. And it was, we worked with the city, and it was suggested by the city that first we go with what the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan showed, which was C1. That was fine with us, because it still would tie into our overall goal of C3. So, I'm here to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Well, let's say, wait till after we get a, get a motion on that, I think. All right, if you could stand by, I'm sure that we'll have some discussion after the public hearing.
Okay.
Does anyone else wish to speak on item 4A? Final third call for anyone to speak on item 4A. Hearing none. We'll start with a motion to lay over. This is a first reading.
Motion.
Moved by Luke Key, second by Vanda Bogart. And Counselor Luke Key.
My only question was, there is not now, and there does not intend to be a license for liquor on this property, or on this, for use. That's my concern.
Currently, there is no, my brother nor I own a liquor license. We do not intend to get a liquor license, and obviously, if we did, we would have to still come to the city to be approved for a liquor license, so we could be denied at that time, even if we ever planned to intend, which we've talked about it more than 20 times, and we definitely do not intend on doing that. There's plenty of people throughout the city and surrounding areas who hold licenses that if they were caterers for the event, that they would be more than sufficient to supply that to the event that would be specific.
Thank you.
Yes.
Counselor DeForest.
When you approached this body in March, and we heard from neighbors about concerns about the use of alcohol on those premises, it sounds, it sounds like to me there's a circumvention here, that instead of you holding a liquor license, you'll be inviting other vendors in who'll be able to use their license to serve alcohol. I'm still hearing concerns from nearby church, and nearby daycare, the neighbors, that they're concerned about this, this change in the comp plan. I mean, to me, it feels close to spot zoning. We're not zoning tonight, but the comp plan is one step on the way to zoning it. And so, I, you know, I'm concerned, I certainly, I appreciate your investment in this property, and I appreciate the economic development that would occur, but I have to balance that with the concerns that have been very assertively shared by the neighbors, in trying to preserve the integrity of that neighborhood. So, you know, I'm, I'm very concerned about this comprehensive plan change. I just want you to understand why.
Sure.
Any other councilors have comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion to lay over till the next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Now on to item number five, citizens' participation. We have reached the point in the agenda for citizens to speak to the council about issues that are coming before us, or may come before us in the future. Councilor members may not act on any requests at this meeting, but may refer the speaker to staff for assistance. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes or less, and refrain from personal attacks of any kind. I have no sheets indicating anyone wants to speak before us, so I'll call, any individuals wish to speak for us on citizens' participation? Second call for anyone to come forward and speak under citizens' participation. And the final call for anyone to come forward and speak to us under citizens' participation. Hearing none, I will move forward to close citizens' participation and move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. The consent agenda consists of items 6A and 6B. Do I?
Motion for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Luke Key, second by DeForest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes six to zero. Item number seven, city ordinances.
A proposed ordinance to create section 7.25 sub 9 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to carbon monoxide detectors.
Mr. President, thank you. The state implemented a series of rules in the last couple of years regarding carbon monoxide detectors in single and two-family dwelling units. The state mandated the presence of carbon monoxide detectors in, in those types of units at that point, and it would be a violation of state law not to comply with that. As with a lot of the state code, the city typically attempts to adopt them as equivalent city violations, so that they can be processed in the city's municipal court. It saves the circuit court. If a violation were written today, prior to, if the council were to adopt this ordinance, prior to that action by council, the action would have to be taken by our police or fire folks up to the district attorney's office prosecuted through circuit court. This ordinance merely allows the same violation to be prosecuted and handled through the municipal court here in the city. With that, I'll stand by to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have a move to suspend the rules?
I'll move to suspend.
Moved by DeForest, second by Luke Key. Any questions on suspending the rules? Call the matter. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes six to zero. Do I have a motion on the, on the merits? Moved by Spritzer.
I'll second on merits.
Seconded by DeForest. Anybody, any questions?
Just, just a comment, Mr. President. Unfunded state mandate coming down from Madison onto local people.
That's all. Any other questions or comments? I'll call the matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Matter passes six to zero. Appointments, we have none. Nine. Counselor activities and upcoming events. Let's start with Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two very fun events I was able to participate in this past week. One was the Public Works Employee Picnic to, to thank them, to express our gratitude for their service to our city's residents during the storm cleanup, the aftermath. And so, we, several of us had the chance to literally serve them by serving them lunch that day to express our gratitude. I served the beans. I got the most, least popular food item to serve. I think some guys just took the beans because they felt bad for me. But I really wanted to publicly express my appreciation to our Public Works employees and the way they stepped up. So many of them worked long, long days right after the storm. I also would like to express my appreciation to some of the outlying communities that stepped up to help us as well. City of Janesville and also Ederton came to our rescue. Some of the guys from Ederton were there, and that was nice to talk with them. It was just nice to see that collaboration across municipalities, that if there's a need, that we're all willing to chip in and help. So, would like to express my gratitude there. I also am looking forward to having pizza with the fire department this week at the luncheons, and to thank them as well for the above and beyond. The service calls were an absolutely unfathomable number of service calls we received the first day of the storm and into the next day. And then, finally, really enjoyed the Latino Community Fair down at Riverside Park. I got to roll up my sleeve and surfaritos, and was there most of the day doing that, and getting to practice my abysmal Spanish with many residents there. So, I appreciate the Latino Service Providers Coalition for hosting that event, and Friends of the Riverfront for also helping to make that possible. Nikki Myers is just incredible, how she reaches out to all members of our community and helps them to feel welcome. So, thank you for that event as well.
Counselor Kincaid.
I have no, nothing to report this week. Thank you.
Counselor Spritzer.
Nothing to report this week.
Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Just a couple items, Mr. President. I had the opportunity, along with several other councilors, Luke Key, Levy, DeForest, to attend the block parties that occurred almost two weeks ago now. We primarily got to Los Casas, or at least I did, on the west side, with a couple on the east side, but they were well organized and a nice opportunity to get out and see individuals in their communities. Also had a chance to attend the DPW picnic the other day, again with Counselor Luke Key and DeForest, and also Counselor Haynes was there, again thanking the individuals who participated and worked so hard with the cleanup on the west side, so.
Counselor Luke Key.
Just add, I too was honored to go to so many picnics on the night, and to serve our DPW workers, and to attend the Latino Fair on Friday evening. That's all. Thank you.
I have very little to add, other than the fact that I would take exception with Counselor DeForest's statement, that she had the least desired item. I was serving sauerkraut. I assure you that that was far less desired than, than her beans. And that'll be, that'll conclude, that will conclude the council activities and upcoming events. Item number 10 is the city manager's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'd like to introduce Harry Mathos, the Director of Water Resources for the City of Beloit. He's a division head, position within the Public Works Department, responsible for all of the city's utilities, water, wastewater, and stormwater, and Harry has a presentation, and some of his staff here with him this evening, which he will also introduce.
Okay. Thank you. And I would like to echo Counselor Haynes's issue about the, what's it, not the beans?
Sauerkraut.
Sauerkraut. I had to carry the sauerkraut away, and you're right, it was not a very popular item. First, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight. Right now, Steve Woodman, who is our, I'm sorry, I have a tendency to walk away from, because I tend to move when I speak, so forgive me if I tend to walk away. Steve Woodman, he's our collection systems engineer, been with the city for?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years. But fortunately, Brett Abear, who is our, another collection system supervisor, is a frontline supervisor. Steve is on the engineering side. He sort of designs and works with the contractors to develop our program, and Brett is sort of the frontline person. So Brett can't be here tonight, he has a sick child at home. But to give you, I'd take about 10 to 15 minutes of your time to give you an idea of where we're at with the City of Beloit. All of you are familiar with what's going on in the City of South Beloit right now. Our friends and neighbors in South Beloit are having some issues with their sewers right now, and they're kind of a microcosm of where we were 25 years ago. So, if you take a look at South Beloit and see where we're at right now, it'll give you a good idea of just how far we've advanced, and all the work that Steve has put forth, and everybody else, including our staff. Bud West, who currently is retired, he just retired a few weeks ago, he was a long-term city employee. Cliff Stenilson, Marv Leverens, Tuffy Davis, and Mike Fallon are the crew that works on the streets. The DPW employees, they deserve a, in a large part, a lot of the work that goes on. They put their hands in, and they get the work done. So I also want to take the time to thank them for all the work they do, too. So again, we'll get moving. Again, Steve Woodman, collection system engineer, Brett Abear is the supervisor, frontline, and then myself, I just happen to be up here talking about it. There used to be a phrase back in the day called "The solution to pollution is dilution." Basically, you have a lot of water, you put a little water in it, it cleans, it magically cleans it up. Well, we've come to realize that that's just not true. Now, if you look back in 1951, the city council in South, on South Bluff Road purchased some land used for a wastewater treatment plant, and only sewers on the west side will go through, because the east sewers run so full of rainwater, that the material, material is sufficiently diluted to go to the river. That's how we used to treat wastewater, is simply by dilution. So it just gives you an idea of what we're up against, and why we are where we are, why we're treating the infiltration inflow. This is essential, and Steve, you can jump in any time with any, anything to add. This is obviously the central business district of Beloit in 1990. You can see down here is the old wastewater treatment plant, and if you can, take a good look at it, because, give you a little perspective, there's a slide coming up in a little bit on the new wastewater treatment plant. But this was the trouble area for, for the City of Beloit. So, the oldest, the oldest sewers, pretty much of the city, correct, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there was a lot of leakers, a lot of problems, a lot of what's called infiltration inflow, a lot of clear water coming into our sewer system. Of course, the more water that goes in there, the more we have to treat, the more it costs electricity, and the more it costs the chemicals. So the more we can take out of the system, the easier the plant can function, and it just costs us less money to operate. So that's the reason we take the clear water out of there. And this gives you an idea of just how it infiltrates into our sewer. The large piece right here would be a standard sewer. You have sewer laterals that go to businesses, industries, and homes. You have the joints, and you have manholes and the chimneys. And anywhere there's a crack or a seam or a problem, the clear water, which surrounds the pipe already, groundwater, will surround the pipe, it'll enter into the sewer, gets into the sanitary sewers, then we have to pump it down at the wastewater plant. So that's the reason, obviously, we want to get rid of it. And here, this gives you an idea that, in 2008 was a really good example of some of the problems we can have. In 2008, this, this here is a graph of the, this is our influent to the plant. I say influent to the plant, it's the amount of gallons we're pumping into the wastewater treatment plant. And this is the river level. So you can see, as the river goes, so goes the flow to the wastewater treatment plant. What we want to do is minimize that, that rainwater, that river water, or any sort of high-water table getting into our sewers. But that just shows just the correlation between the river and our sewers.
That was back in 2000.
That was 2000? Okay. And this here, you can see right here, this is just south, or I should say, just north of the, the new kayak put in, just south of Grand Avenue. There's a storm sewer, and what happens is, it's called exfiltration. You got the river water that'll flow back in to the storm sewer, and it'll leak out of the storm sewer, and the storm sewers run parallel to the sanitary, so we were getting river water back into our sanitary sewers. It'll leak out of the, out of the storm sewer, right back into our parallel-running sanitary sewers. So again, you had rainwater, you had river water, you had, you had groundwater, you had all sorts of water entering into our sanitary sewer system, and we had to figure out a way to block that. And that's what's going on down in South Beloit right now. It's going to cost them an awful lot of money to repair. Again, they're a microcosm of where we were 25 years ago. So what happened back in March 16, 1987, most of you are probably aware, through most, for, through much of the 80s, the City of Beloit was under a sewer moratorium. They banned construction of sewers, which of course, then we couldn't, the city couldn't develop, couldn't build. And obviously, that's not a very good thing for the city. So, in March 16, 1987, the bans were lifted, and we went forth with the construction and planning for a new wastewater treatment plant.
Of course, it has to happen. So forgive me. All right.
So once the ban was lifted, then we were ready to start rocking and rolling, build a new wastewater treatment plant. And of course, this is the new wastewater treatment plant. And if you look at just two of these tanks right here, two of these rectangular tanks right here, they contain more capacity than the entire old wastewater treatment plant. So it just says, we're not overdesigned, we're just very well-designed. We have a lot of growth for the future, and obviously, that's what we want to do, but we have a lot of growth for the future. We're in very good shape. The plant is now 21 years old, performing very well. It's in very, a very good state of repair, so things are going very well out there. Very proud of the work the guys and girls have done out there over the years, just, again, from where I've come from, and I've said this every time I stand up here, from where I've come from, it's a long way, and I'm very proud of what they do. Now, what are the benefits of a successful INI program? You minimize electrical usage. That's obviously very critical. The more water you pump, the more electricity you're going to use.
100%. 100% of all water that gets in the sewers has to be pumped two and a half miles up 66 feet. Takes a lot of energy.
Yep. But by also removing the water, we also minimize our chemical usage. At the wastewater treatment plant, our chemicals that we add to disinfect or to, to make the water that goes back to the river disinfected, we have to treat it with chlorine and another chemical called sodium bisulfate. That's all based on the amount of flow that's going through. Therefore, the less flow, the less chemical we use. Again, saving money, chemicals are very expensive. Minimize NR 101 fees. NR 101 fees are fees that are based on the amount of, I don't want to use the word pollutants, but that's what the DNR uses, pollutants that enter into the river. The cleaner our water, the less money the DNR charges us for allowing it to go into the river. We have to pay a fee for the cleanliness of our water, if you will. The dirtier the water, the more it costs us. The cleaner the water, obviously, the less. So it behooves us to keep the water as clean as possible, and to discharge as little as possible, because the higher the flow, that factors into the calculations, so the higher the flow, the more it's going to cost us, the less the flow, the less it's going to cost us. So again, clear water kills us when it comes to all sorts of fees that the DNR charges. We want to minimize sanitary sewer overflows. Obviously, we don't want sewage in people's basements. Bottom line, that's, goes without saying. We also minimize disposal costs for decanted solids. The less solids, maybe touch on this one, Steve, I'm not sure which.
Well, we, we try to decant our vector solids.
Okay.
And then dispose of them, and dry as we can. Way possible. That way, we're not transporting water.
Next time, we'll have you come up to the microphone. We started a study in 2001, and Steve really kicked it off in 2001, it continues today. What we do is, we, we televise storm and sanitary sewers. We use cure-and-place sewer lining, it's called CIPP. It's basically a, a chemical resin that we use to line the sewers. Cement lining of defective manholes, sewer grout, sealing of manholes, and you'll see pictures of these coming up, will give you an idea of what we're talking about. Bulkheading unused sewers, and sewer manhole reconstruction, and water main leak location and repairs. Now, Steve, if you want to come up and give an explanation as to exactly what you're seeing, I know. This is a shot with our own TV that we, we recently purchased. We're going down through a 27-inch storm sewer, and the guys happen to see this line coming in from the right side. They turned, looked up the, this pipe, and you can see a manhole on the other side. That's a sanitary sewer manhole on the other side. This is, essentially, it's a legal connection, and we've immediately got that taken care of. But we found a lot of these in the city. So it just illustrates the importance of having the televising equipment. We go in there, we send a camera in there, we can see where we have leaks and problems, and again, the payoff is, or the payback is enormous. And this gives you an idea of just how, how some of the equipment works. It goes in the sewer, and again, this is a grouting process, Steve. Yep, just basically goes in and just seals all the areas. You have a, say, a crack in the, in the, or I should say, at the, at the joint in the pipe, you put a little grout around that, you got cracks around your manholes, you can grout around there, and again, around your manholes, again, just a way of sealing. And then when you see some of the contractors out there, you can see here, they have this long, sort of thread-like piece, that's the, the cure-and-place liner, sort of a resin-type product that, that folds as it goes in, and they have just this most fantastic way of doing it. It goes in, folds in, it just expands. Yeah, just adversely, it just, adversity, just expands and gets a coat around the sewer and prevents leaks. So it's just, you know, it's, it's hard, it's hard to pass things around and show like this. It's great if you can ever get out, and if you ever see it out there, stop and take a look, it's an amazing process. And that's what we've been doing for, for several years. Again, it's a great process, works really well, and the, the benefit, when you see in the end here, some of the graphs, you're going to see the benefits are just amazing. And what we also do is, we take a spray-on grout, where we can spray some manholes, and again, it's just another method that we can use to, to seal the manholes. We just take some spray-on grout, they sit on top, they spray it in, and it just, it just works wonders. And this is our crew right here. One thing I want to point out is in back, we have our television truck and our manhole rehab. We've taken over a lot of work that we used to let contractors do. We do that in-house now. We've invested some money, but again, that payback and that investment has been tremendous. When being able to find, instead of hiring out and finding it, we're able to find it ourselves, and, and the staff has become very, very proficient at using the equipment. And that's, you know, obviously, the other important part is getting staff well-trained in it. They're very well-trained, they love using it, and they take a lot of pride, and when they do find a problem similar to the one we just saw, they take a lot of pride in finding it and taking care of it. So I take my hats off to our staff, they do a tremendous job. So a little rehab summary. We see IPP lined most sewers in the central business district. We've abandoned about 51 sewer sections. We've abandoned 82 manholes, and all of these are problem children, if you will. So the, the fact that we abandoned them or bulkhead them means we can just kind of take them out, and we don't have to worry about them anymore. We check them periodically to make sure everything's okay, but it's basically no longer a problem anymore. We've lined 75 manholes, we've relayed 17 sections, and we've installed many, many bulkheads. And repaired many water main leaks again. So kind of here's, in a nutshell, here's what it's, here's the benefits provided. When we talk about emergency callouts that are city-issue, if, if a resident comes home, or somebody comes home, they find, you know, maybe some sewage in the basement, which is the worst-case scenario of anybody coming home. Back in the year 2000, we would have anywhere from, well, you can see right here, there was about 39 in 2000. We're down to around five a year right now. We've reduced it substantially. When it comes to chemical, or I should say, electrical usage, you can see here, the trend obviously is going downward. These are kilowatt-hours used at what's called our Northwest Pump Station, which is right over at the site of the old wastewater plant. You can, again, you can see the downward trend. Here's the Sherland Avenue Pump Station, which is just across the street from the old wastewater site. Again, the downward trend. We're making very good progress here. This was 1,17750 kilowatt-hours in 2008. We're down to half of that. So again.
That was because all, all the streets were flooded downtown.
Yeah. So, there was a tremendous, again, there was a tremendous amount of electricity used to pump water, and, and we've made a lot of strides to, to reduce our electric consumption. Chemical usage here at the wastewater treatment plant, again, downward. Chemical usage here at the wastewater treatment plant, again, downward. The more water you get out, the better off you are. But there is a problem, you know, you get to a point of diminishing returns, and we are actually starting to see that at the wastewater treatment plant. And the first place we're going to see it is odors. I'll just warn you right now, odors will be the first thing we'll see at the wastewater treatment plant, where we've kind of taken pride over the years that it, it's not odor-free, but yet there's a minimal odors. We've taken very few odor complaints from, regarding the wastewater treatment plant. But the less clear water you have, the stronger the wastewater is going to be, and the wastewater is going to generate odors. So we've, we've implemented a, a few items. We just completed a project that had odor control components. We have yet to put one online. We wanted to see what happened with the first phase, to see how it works. Now we're, we'll put the second phase in here soon to see how it works. Although winter's coming up, we'll probably wait till next year to do it, because we've only had one real, serious odor complaint. Lady was driving past the freeway, and she said it smelled, and I take her word for it, there's no doubt about it. But we'll do it in phases and see what happens. But we invest a lot of money, and, and it will work. So we're kind of at the point of diminishing returns right now. I, I keep telling Steve he can stop anytime now. We do need a little bit of clear water in there, so. And we have seen some operational, not issues, but there's a change in operations at the wastewater plant now, where before, you could kind of sit back and let it operate. Now we have to do a little more process control, so it's kind of, it makes it a little more fun. That's what I have on the sewer part. Larry asked me to insert one slide on the phosphorus issue. This has finally come to a head. Right now, the, what's called the total maximum daily load rule is now a reality. It's in effect. Every wastewater treatment plant throughout the state of Wisconsin will have their permit changed whenever that permit comes up for renewal. So, and we're no different. Ours is going to be renewed in 2014. However, we're going to have a compliance schedule, where we're probably not going to have to reach the new limit till 2018 or 2022, so we do have time. Right now, our current limit is two parts per million. The new limit will be roughly .2 to .37 parts per million, so you can see it's, it's a significant drop. It's very low. Is it realistic? That's, that's obviously debatable. Whether it makes sense or not is not for, for me to debate, it's for us to go ahead and take care of. And as probably you're all aware, talking to your professional colleagues, you're, everybody in your position is dealing with the same thing at, at, at many different levels. So it's here, it's a reality. We'll have to deal with it. Fortunately, the, the wastewater plant right now averages .4 parts per million. So we're, we're almost there. I mean, we're in a very good spot. We don't have a long way to go to get where we have to get to, but we just need that buffering capacity to take care of any high, you know, highs and lows and any sort of fluctuations in what we have to do. So there is a, in fact, I, the bids are due on the 24th, on Friday, for an RFP that we let to get a consulting group in here. We're going to talk about what we need to do, and chances are, we'll, we'll have to go to some sort of chemical polishing. But we're developing a map to that success, and that's where we are right now. We're ahead of the game. In fact, on September 20th, what's called the TMDL Group, the Total Maximum Daily Load Group, is having a meeting up in Lake Mills to kind of say, well, what are we going to do now? So I don't think it's in our best interest to say, shrug our shoulders and go, I don't know, let's take a proactive approach, take care of business, get it done, and get everything set for the future. So that's my approach anyway. So we can, you know, we can all sit down and talk about it, but I think that's what, you know, I think that's what's best for the city of Beloit. Absolutely. So let's, you know, move forward and see what we can do. So that's what I have. Now I am ready for any questions, and anything that was put forward, or anything you want.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you, Harry. Wonderful presentation.
Thanks.
Thank you also, Steve. I wanted to ask, because obviously, we're concerned about TMDL, that's why Larry had to insert it.
Right.
I, I just wanted to check with you, because I know we've been dewatering our solids and spreading them locally, which has been a win-win for us, because, you know, we're, it's actually a revenue generator, and we're getting rid of some of our solids. Are we shitting ourselves in the foot, though, in terms of phosphorus and nitrates by spreading it locally? Do you think that's an issue or no?
Well, it's the shell game. It's, it's been a shell game for many, many years. You either, if you remove the phosphorus from the wastewater, it has to go somewhere. Where does it go? It goes to the soil, because we remove the solids in our process, we, and then we land apply it on the farmers' fields. Well, they've created what's called a P-index. Now, now they said, okay, we've dealt with the water, well, it's all gone to the soil, now we have to deal with the soil issue. So that's what we're doing right now. And by going to the new process, the cake process, that, again, is the first step in a longer process to get us to where we need to be. And that is composting, and then Class A sludge, where we can use it on, on the golf courses, and you can even market it if you so choose. So it's, it's the first step to get where we need to, to truly be, and to truly be sustainable, is the Class A product. And again, that obviously takes money.
I'd just like to comment how pleased I am to hear of the tangible return on investment for the televising equipment.
Oh, yeah.
It's expensive, you know, we hear a little flack for that, but it certainly has paid off, and I appreciate the crew for their work, and it's certainly paid off in the long run in terms of not having to hire out for that. And I think we probably do it, do a better job of getting to all the lines on a rotated, regular basis, because we have the equipment in-house versus when we're contracting it out. So I'm pleased with the environmental results and the, the financial cost analysis results.
Absolutely. They, they do a wonderful job. Yep, it's, it's money well-spent, no doubt.
Thank you.
Your, your graph showing the continued improvement in your, your tasks was very impressive. I did notice that in 2002, you seemed to be getting ahead of the game. Lower, lower electrical usage, lower, less problems in basements. What was going on then?
Well, I know, Steve.
I think it was bad data.
Bad data?
2002, okay, yeah.
I thought maybe it was a drought or something.
Yeah, unfortunately, data can be, you know, statistics are great, but they can also fool you sometimes, too.
Thank you for your candor.
Counselor Van de Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to thank you and Steve and the other workers in your division for the outstanding results that you're displaying here. Just looking at the graph on the computer, Sherland Avenue Pump Station in 2000 used two-thirds more energy than it did last year. And we constantly are regaled in the public, in campaigns or in the press, to, to make government more efficient, and run like a business, et cetera. While setting aside an obvious difference that if a business isn't making a profit in an area, they get out of it, and we can't get out of sewage treatment, we are showing consistent improvement in terms of energy usage, chemical usage, the other usages that we have to expend. And we deserve, and you deserve rather, a big pat on the back for, and, and at a boy and at a girl for doing a good job.
I'll relay that to them.
With the, with the, another, this is apparently my phrase for the evening, another unfunded mandate in terms of phosphorus reduction. I would point out that the millions of dollars that your municipalities are going to have to spend in the next few years is, is a burden put upon us by the state government, and it's not shared by some of our good friends in the rural communities. And so when you go and compare tax rates and tax this and tax that, you need to keep in mind that we have a whole different set of playing field and playing rules, rather, than do they in some of their jurisdictions. So I just want to make that point.
All right, very well, thank you.
Thank you.
And just one more quick point regarding the pump station. Steve has also put forth an RFP, we're bringing in a consulting group. Right now, when the plant, the wastewater treatment plant was designed, was designed to pump anywhere to, up to 28 million gallons a day. Right now, we're, we're averaging about three and a half million gallons a day. So we're going to bring consultants, and we're going to take those five 250 horsepower pumps, and maybe put in like two smaller pumps to take care of the load that five 250 horse used to do. So again, we're always looking for ways to take care of business like that. Absolutely. So we've got a little ways to go, but we'll get there. Thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Thank you for the great work with inefficiency, and, and I definitely think a proactive approach on the phosphorus mandate is the way to go, because then we're, we're ahead of the game, and, and that's a good place to be. One question, you were talking about the abandoned sewer sections and abandoned manholes. Can you just help me understand what, what that looks like? How do you abandon a sewer section? What replaces it?
I'll let the expert speak to that.
They're, in, in the old downtown areas, there's, there's a lot of manholes that were sent out to, how should I say this? They're no longer useful. And so we just essentially bulkhead them, and then, and then we actually fill the, the unused manholes with sand. And that's all there is to it.
And with the sewer sections, are those just, new, new sewer has been laid, or you run the connection somewhere else, or how?
Right. Usually, there's a parking lot there or something. And if we need a sewer in the future, we'd have to build a new one.
Thank you.
Counselor Lukey.
Thank you. Good job, Harry.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll, I'll pass on everyone's thank you, so I certainly am going to, your organization is simply miles ahead of professionalism and, and actual execution than any, any other wastewater treatment facility or department that I have experienced in my adult life, so.
I'll let our staff know. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Item number 11, 11A.
A resolution authorizing the city of Beloit to partner with the city of Janesville and Rock County through a regional memorandum of understanding to purchase a rescue vehicle for the purposes of law enforcement, amending the 2012 budget and appropriating funds necessary for the procurement of the equipment.
Chief Shap.
Thank you. The department intends to purchase a rescue vehicle with confiscated funds that have been given back to us from the Department of Justice. These are funds that are made available to us from fairly recent drug investigations. It's not taxpayer money. It's, it's an incentive for organizations to help with task force and do drug investigations. This joint venture with the city of Janesville, Police Department, Rock County Sheriff's Office, we think is very important. It's one of the, the tasks that we have been given by the council to partner with other agencies within the county and the area for better services. This rescue vehicle is a primary platform nowadays for public safety tactical units. They utilize it for officer safety in that of citizens and rescue situations. Our department has been evaluating this opportunity since at least 2004 for the use of a rescue, rescue vehicle. The opportunity for this joint operation with three agencies was recently renewed as an effort to avoid duplication of services and capital expenditures related to tactical operations. The MOU that we're asking you to, the draft MOU, we're asking you to, okay, will help solidify the operating parameters that allow the teams to better serve the citizens and officers of Beloit, Janesville, and Rock County. Some of the key issues, I think, that are important, that we've talked to the staff about, is that the MOU will provide for cost sharing with, at three jurisdictions within the area. The funds for purchase come from confiscated funds, it's not taxpayer money. The rescue vehicle itself is considered a best practices platform for SWAT teams in the United States. The rescue vehicle provides the safety needed for officers to manage situations involving persons with high-caliber weapons and military training that we're seeing around the country nowadays. Then the newer model vehicles, 2009, that we're hoping to purchase is a refurbished vehicle that meets all of our needs, and recently, in the last month, this vehicle has become available to us. With that, I'm sure there's some questions.
All right, we'll get a motion to move through.
Motion. Say.
Okay. Motion by Lukey, second by DeForest. Counselor, questions and comments? I'll start with Counselor Van de Bogart.
Thank you. Chief, can you tell us, what is the approximate or anticipated lifespan of this vehicle?
Approximately 15 years. The 2009 model is much better than the older model that, that was available.
And during that lifespan, and my reading of the memorandum of understanding talks about the city of Beloit being responsible for the maintenance of the vehicle, what are the ongoing maintenance costs, and, and how will they be affected by your budget going forward?
The vehicle maintenance will be the responsibility of the Beloit Police Department. We anticipate replacement of tires, some engine work, it's a diesel engine, shouldn't need a lot of repair work. As far as damage to the vehicle, that would be the responsibility if damage occurs during operation by whatever agency is using it at the time.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
And we would use, be able to use confiscated funds on a yearly basis for the maintenance. That's part of the agreement.
All right. And then you mentioned the funds issue. As I understand, the source of the funds is DOJ reimbursement for, for monies that were involved in drugs presumably from here. What other uses could be used, and how did you prioritize, or did you prioritize other uses for this possible windfall from other sources? I'm thinking particularly of items like ShotSpot or, or, or other possible uses of those funds. Did you go through a prioritizing process? Or, I know Captain Tyler's been after this vehicle for almost 10 years, but what sort of decision-making led you to us today?
Part of the equitable, equitable sharing agreement that, that we go into with the Department of Justice is to use confiscated funds only for certain items related to police work. Equipment is the obvious, obvious item that we can use, and this is directly related to some of the emergency situations we're involved with. Other, other items would include training, and smaller items such as, such as weapons. I would, if I were you, I would ask the next question is, can't we use this money for personnel? I, I could, I could put more people to work for sure, but part of the agreement is not to supplant funds that are available in the budget or in the city at the time, so I can't use this money to replace police officers at this time.
Could you use it to train them?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
And we, and we have used confiscated funds for training. Our drug and gang unit often uses the money for, for their type of training. Yes.
All right. And during the past, you pick the increment of time. How often has the need been in this community, or in the county, or in Janesville for use of this vehicle?
The needs, the opportunities seem to be coming closer together than they have, than they have been. We can point to some recent situations where vehicles like this were used in Jefferson County, where our tactical team helped support three other tactical teams, and with a total of four of these vehicles. We've had situations in Dane County, where we've been involved with, and Winnebago County. So they seem to be, they seem to be cropping up more often. However, this vehicle isn't used just for the type of dangerous tactical situation where someone has a weapon, they can be used for high-risk search warrants where people, people may have weapons, or, or where we don't need to put our officers in harm's way approaching a house, they can use this vehicle to get there. There's a lot more situations than the one we can use it at than the typical ones that you see on television.
Well, you, you made reference to some of the counties surrounding us. Where do they get their vehicles from? Does, for example, the National Guard have a cache of these vehicles, and could we use one when the, the need comes up from time to time?
As far as I know, the National Guard does not. Dane County has a vehicle, Winnebago County, Illinois has a vehicle. We've been partners with them on operations with the use of our vehicles. use of their vehicles. Some of our people are trained in the, in the use of it. This would add another dimension to safety for officers and citizens in the northern Illinois, central, south Wisconsin area. Would provide a vehicle between Dane County and Winnebago County, Illinois for support of operations all up and down the interstate.
And presumably have a little bit quicker access to it than having to get it from Madison or from Rockford or wherever.
Yes. The captain pointed out an analogy for me, which I am going to try to remember to repeat, is when you have a fire in a house and you're up on the fourth floor, you can't wait for the long ladder truck to come from Madison. And some of the situations that were tactical situations we're involved with are very similar, that we need a vehicle within 30 minutes, 60 minutes at the most, when you're talking about safety, especially if someone has been hurt and you need to rescue them. You can't wait that long.
Well, I'm, I'm familiar certainly with the need for it. I think we had a discussion at one point a number of years ago when I was working as an assistant district attorney prosecuting an individual who, in a domestic abuse situation out in the county, in a farm situation, the sheriff's department officer pulled in, the individual cranked off a shotgun round above his head and dropped the weapon back down toward him and said, "The next one's coming at you." The officer got behind his car door and was able to try and back out. He got stuck. And the incident fortunately resulted in no death taking place. But if you had access to this vehicle, it might have had a different sort of protective capacity for the officer. However, it would have been over before you could have had a chance to mobilize this thing. So I guess I'm conflicted a little bit. I certainly see the need for officer safety and the scenario where it could be used, but most of the time, it isn't going to be doing anything except sitting there using as a training platform. I have a bit of a conflict here.
Sure. I suspect that it will be used quite a bit for training. Any piece of equipment that we have usually doesn't sit too long because our units need to be proficient in it. Otherwise, they shouldn't be using it. So between the three agencies, I suspect you'll see it driving around the county quite a bit. Oftentimes, the teams have an opportunity to go up to Fort McCoy and do some training, or they'll go up and train with Dane County, which we do operations with, or Winnebago County. So it will be used. We're seeing that this unit is used for a lot, a lot more exercises and a lot more operations. I think we're going to find some more uses for it than the obvious.
And you probably can't answer this with any degree of certainty, but do you anticipate a continued flow of drug money sufficient to meet some of the expenses for maintenance, training, and to cover the costs so that it doesn't come out of the general fund?
Yes, I do. I don't see a decline in, I don't see a decline in the money that comes in. I expect, as a matter of fact, some more money to come in next year because I've just signed some of the paperwork for it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'll quickly interject, but I, I hope very much that there isn't, that that money does dry out rapidly. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Well, given it's, it's less frequent use, I'm, I think it makes sense that this is a collaborative effort. And kudos for looking at a needed piece of equipment and how to make it most cost-effective for us. So I'm pleased that, first of all, this is a collaboration among area municipality, police departments, which we have encouraged as a body. So thank you for that. And secondly, I, I don't want to put a price tag on officer safety. These are the highest-risk situations that we're placing them in. And so I'm pleased that it will certainly increase their safety and effectiveness. So for me, this, this makes sense. And so despite that it might not get as much use as perhaps my colleagues referring to, I think hence the reason why it's, it's a shared vehicle, so that it could be used across the area. So thank you.
Counselor Spitzer.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Just to clarify what you said about what this money can and can't be used for more generally. You said it can't be used to replace items in the budget. In terms of personnel, is there any point in the future that it could be used for additional personnel beyond what we have the budget for otherwise? Or is that generally a no-no?
I'll, I'll give you an example. If we were able to add another person into our drug and gang unit, we could use some of that money to, to support that position, but I would need another, another person. I can give you an example of something that we're hoping to use some of that extra money for is remove some of the items that we have in the, in the budget, in the CIP budget, with money that we have above and beyond the money that we're asking you to allocate tonight.
And about how much money does that, is that an annual amount that we get? And what is the average?
It's not, it's, it's not consistent at all. In the past, we've, we've gotten approximately $50,000 a year, and it's been accumulating. We have a considerable amount more than that with the last drug arrests that we made with our task force.
And then related to this vehicle, do you have a, any estimate of the costs of the training and driving it around the county as part of that, that annually, either for Beloit or for the three entities combined, what that would add to costs?
Approximately $1,500, I'm, I'm going to guess. However, part of the MOU is when the vehicle's used, it has to be returned with fuel in it. So there won't be, the operating costs will be maintenance costs for us.
And then about how many times do you think each year we would actually either, either Beloit or Beloit, Janesville, Rock County use this in a, in an actual, you know, tactical situation?
I would, I'm going to estimate three and as it becomes better known, three to five. We'll get requests from outlying counties, especially Rock County will, because at, these operations, we never go with one unit to these operations. There's always support units that go, and especially when they go for long periods of time. That's, that's why we need multiple SWAT teams in the area for support from each team, because they can only work for four to six hours and they need to be replaced.
Thank you.
All right, Chief. So, oh, you, you, go, yeah, go ahead.
I thought you were skipping over me.
No, it's good.
Chief, I applaud you and the department and the, for partnering, partnering with the city of Janesville and the Rock County in getting a much-needed apparatus, which will be kept in Beloit. And you basically got it at half-cost because it's refurbished. Is that correct?
Yes, and we're getting it at half-cost again with the other agencies also partnering, partnering with us. And as far as keeping it in, in Beloit goes, I know there's been discussion about that, but we, we hope to keep it out near the interstate where it has easy access to the rest of the, rest of the county. And so it's, even though it's here, it's, it's a multi-jurisdiction vehicle.
I want to thank Captain Tyler for his perseverance, too. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get on to my question. What vehicle was available for these uses before?
Well, it started back in the, in the eighties with a yellow school bus. And then it moved up to a green panel van with no ballistic protection, and that has been it. We have no, no vehicle to protect our people to go into situations where there's weapons involved.
So you're not able to, you haven't been able at all to get a hold of someone to come down with a protected vehicle with some ballistic resistance?
No, I don't. We have had, we have had vehicles from Dane County and Winnebago County here for high-risk search warrants. Yes, we have had them on occasion.
Okay, but that, that took a lot of forethought and planning.
Those are pre-planned events. And, and there's a difference between a pre-planned event where we can contact another jurisdiction and say, hey, tomorrow we're going to have a high-risk search warrant, and that works great. And none of us have any problems with that. It's the rescue-type vehicles, the rescue events, where we might have to go into a situation and help a citizen out, where if someone has a weapon or our officers need to go in immediately and they can't wait for another vehicle, where time really matters. So that's the big difference between this and borrowing other units or sharing units from counties away.
Okay, thank you. Counselor DeForest, do you have additional questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure as clarification that the confiscated funds that are provided, we can't use as a sub-plant. So those could not be used to hire a police officer. Is that correct? Because that's an issue or a question that will be raised by the public.
Correct. We can't hire, we can't hire a long-term police officer. You can use it for short-term police officers, but then you have to make a promise that you're going to keep those officers.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing, this passes 6-0. Now on to item 11B.
A resolution approving a joint agreement with the school district of Beloit for truancy intervention coordinator.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The agreement before you is basically a renewal of prior agreements we've had with the school district. In some years past, the school district had a truancy intervention coordinator, but that person was only available during the nine normal months of the school year and not available during the summer. The municipal court conducts court during the summer months. And as that person worked closer and closer with the municipal court, it became apparent that there'd be a, a great benefit in, in having those services available during the summer months. The city, a few years back, agreed to fund 25% of that position for the school. It's a school employee, a school position. We agreed to pick up 25% of it so the person could work through the summer months. The program has been very successful. The truancy intervention coordinator attends each Thursday, sets a municipal court during the juvenile portion when the truancy cases come in. The estimated cost for the upcoming year is just slightly over $13,000, I think $13,011. The municipal court already included that in last year's budget. There's no direct budget implications. And we recommend the council approve this, allowing this arrangement to continue. And I'll obviously answer any questions.
Motion. Second. Motion by Lupe, second by Vanda Bogart. Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment. I'm pleased with this collaboration between the city council and the school district of Beloit. From the, the last outcomes that I've seen, this program works in terms of trying to catch students who are starting to experience truancy issues and really intervene to, to try to address their issues. So I'm, I'm very pleased with this initiative. Fred Atlas has done a wonderful job connecting with the kids and really making a difference so that doesn't become an ongoing problem for the school and for the city. So I'm pleased with this collaboration.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Item 11C.
A resolution approving a commercial offer to purchase for the property located at 232 Sherland Avenue.
And I, I think I'll go ahead and start with this one, and then if there are any additional questions or comments for the city attorney, we'll certainly take care of that before we ask you to vote. Now, this property, as indicated, is located at 232 Sherland Avenue. It's actually on the south side of Sherland Avenue, currently owned by the overflowing cup, Total Life Center Incorporated. This is a parcel of property we've had our eye on for some time. Would like to acquire and clean this particular side of Sherland Avenue in anticipation of that new, what we're referring to as the Confluence Park being built in the city of South Beloit. This would give us an opportunity to acquire this property, part of which is in the state of Wisconsin, would be titled of the city. Part of it is in the state of Illinois, would be titled of South Beloit, very similar to what we did with the old salvaging yard here a few years ago. Our plan would be to demo the building, restore the site. There's also remnants of an old service station left next door. That has, is in the process of being taken by Rock County under a property tax foreclosure. We also plan to acquire that property this fall. We've applied for a grant through DNR to facilitate the brownfield cleanup. And then we would own all those properties, which would be theoretically at least part of the frontage for the new South Beloit park. I also want to add that the service station piece, we're going to acquire that for, through the water, or the sewer utility, so that we can add to the space of that building there. So that'll be coming to you probably later in the fall when we get that deal negotiated. For this particular piece of property, we've had some very good discussions with Reverend Dave Bogderud. We've come to, I think, a good set of terms. The purchase price would be $75,000. We're also recommending that you allow a $5,000 relocation expense. Reverend Bogderud has a lot of storage in this building. There's a lot of stuff that has to be moved and relocated. We also have provided some minor miscellaneous provisions allowing for a sale to be conducted on the property prior to closing. There's a provision in the contract that we will allow the overflowing cup to have one weekend, mutually agreed weekend per year, one of the city's park sites. They run a kind of an outreach program, a mini festival, if you will, to make their services known to the community, and that would be provided at, at no rent. We've agreed on a closing timeline for the end of the month, would take possession around the 25th of September. And of course, this is one of those last little items that we're trying to get completed this summer because we would be using revenue from TIF 5, not general purpose tax revenues for this acquisition, and would eventually become part of the redevelopment again along that portion of Sherland Avenue. Counselor, do you, do you have anything you want to add? Or should we just go to counselor questions at this point and deal, deal with any questions that counselors have?
I might mention just before the, the meeting started, Pastor Dave did drop off, sign copies of, of the draft agreement, and this has always been subject to council approval. If council does approve it, the manager would then execute tomorrow.
Any questions? We'll be happy to answer.
Lupe, move for approval.
Second.
And second by DeForest. All right, let's start with Counselor Vanda Bogart.
You made reference, Mr. Arf, what percentage of the property is in Wisconsin, what percentage is in Illinois, and are we going to receive any monies back from South Beloit for our buying it for them essentially?
The building and the property that the city set out to acquire is actually all in Wisconsin. And that was part of the negotiation, and that's what the money is for. The piece in the state of Illinois is actually vacant. There's a, the back end of the parking lot sits on that parcel over the state line. We really don't want to take the property out of state. So we've contacted South Beloit, and they've agreed to take that property. Again, we negotiated for the building, the lands up front that are in the state of Wisconsin. So we did not ask South Beloit to share in any of the purchase costs.
All right. And how was the figure 75 and 5 arrived at?
Negotiated. Certainly in line with the appraised, well below the appraised value, in line with the assessed value on the building.
All right, thank you. Counselor Spitzer.
Thank you. I know that we're looking to get this done with TIF 5 funds. Would the demolition be able to be covered under TIF 5, or do we have to wait until general purpose revenues are available to do that?
No, we're also planning on doing that. In fact, our public work staff that handles this kind of demolition work has already started, and we'll be inspecting the buildings. And the deal is approved tonight fairly shortly, and we'll start getting our specifications together. If we have issued the contract prior to the 26th of September, we can go ahead and complete the work after that date. But everything must be encumbered or contracted for by the 26th of September. So we'll make sure that that, in fact, is the case with regard to the demolition. So it will be paid part of the TIF district.
So I take it the idea is basically to close on the 25th and sign the contract the next day for the...
We'll actually close on the, late in, in August, we're going to close. And then we'll take possession on the 25th of September. We're anticipating that the demolition, which starts with asbestos removal, would begin very soon thereafter, but probably not be completed until mid-October.
Thank you.
Are there any estimated costs for topsoil plantings and so forth?
No, we're not planning on doing a lot with it. We have topsoil, black dirt in, in stock, and we plan on seeding it when we get done. In fact, that'll probably be a part of the demolition contract. We usually build that in for the demolition contract. So they'll come in and top it off when they get everything removed.
Counselor DeForest.
We're not, I just thought of this. We're not anticipating any issues where, where the DNR will say we'll have to cap the site at all or anything. I mean, it's, it's not an established brownfield, so I'm assuming that we're not disturbing the soil, correct?
Not a brownfield site, not disturbing the soil. We're removing the improvements. We will be capping it to some extent because we will skim off the parking lot, and we will put a black dirt cap on it. But we're not envisioning getting into the ground. Don't envision any brownfield issues. If we do encounter anything, obviously, we'll have to deal with it. But we've worked with DNR, as you know, on a great many of these brownfield issues over the years, including getting the necessary grants if that's required. But at this time, it is not a brownfield site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselor questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll call the...
I'd like to make one further comment, Mr. Spitzer.
Go ahead.
I've thought through this, and I certainly can agree that it's an eyesore, and I don't object to the, the concept of the park and acquiring it. But I am going to vote against this. I think the price is far too high. The $5,000 relocation is far too high. The forgiveness of the property taxes is inappropriate. And those are the reasons I'm going to vote against it, not because I think it's a bad idea. I just think it's too expensive. Thank you.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Item passes 5-1 with Counselor Vanda Bogart in dissension. Item 11D.
A resolution supporting the construction of Inman Parkway Extension Alternative for the county highway G connector.
Mr. Flash.
Yes, Mr. President, we are going to start with the engineer's presentation. If I have any comments to add at the end, I will do that or help with the questions. But I want Mr. Flash to explain this and give all the technical background.
Very good. This project will construct a connector between county highway G and county highway S, also known as Prairie Avenue and Shopeer Roads, respectively, on the northeast side of the city of Beloit. That will provide, will provide improved access to the interstate 3990 corridor and divert traffic from the local streets in that area. from the local streets in that area. The state of Wisconsin desires to use this connector and County Highway G as an alternate route for the I-3990, both during and after the 3990 reconstruction. Rock County and the state of Wisconsin are lead agencies for this project. The Rock County Board will select a preferred alternative route for this connector at a meeting in September. Arizona Associates is the design consultants that the leads have hired to do this work, and there will be a public information meeting on Monday, August 27th, I believe, at Aldrich Middle School from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You're all invited, too. You'll get your invites probably via email tomorrow. Mine came today, so I'll forward mine on to you all. The map that was attached to your packets indicates the locations of the alternative routes. If you want to refer to that map, the red route is the no-build. The blue route is the alternative two, which would improve existing routes known as Philhauer Road, and also add a new connection from Philhauer down to Shopeer Road. And the green routes is shown, I believe there's four of them, is known as the Inman Parkway Extension, and one of those four routes is acceptable potentially as known as the Inman Extension, in corridors that have been previously mapped by the city. The no-build alternative will use the existing Prairie Avenue, Cranston Road, and Shopeer Road, and would not remove traffic from the local streets or improve interstate access. It's just as is, and from a technical standpoint, we do not deem that as desirable for the city of Beloit. Alternative two would improve Philhauer Road and add a new connection to County Highway S. This redirects traffic too far north from the Prairie Avenue business areas, and the business corridor to be beneficial to the city, and therefore, from that technical aspect, we do not deem that to be very desirable for the city either. The alternatives 1A through D is known as the Inman Parkway Extension, closely follows the corridors that were officially mapped by the city in 1970. That was the Prairie Avenue to Creek Road, and in 2004, from Creek Road to Shopeer Road. Alternative 1A through D provides the most direct linkage to the interstate between G and S, and has the greatest benefits to the northeast business corridor and diverts traffic from the local streets. Therefore, we find that one, from a technical standpoint, to be the most desirable. The existing intergovernmental agreement between Rock County and the city for this corridor, where the city is paying for a portion of the design that is within the city limits, was based on the Inman Parkway Extension. In fact, that all started from a application for an earmark that the city started, oh, probably in 2006, maybe a little before that, which was a surprise to get, but we did get it, and then we moved that on with, to the county, as we realized it was much more of a county connection than a city of Beloit connection and route. But, so that's why we are participating in that. By selecting alternative 1A through D, the most direct route, it's between 39 and 90, more people will use this corridor than any of the other two, and the improved access to the interstate will better serve the existing businesses in both the city of Beloit's, the town of Beloit's business districts, and the town of Turtle, and by giving them better access to the major transportation corridors. So, that's why the engineering division is recommending approval of the resolution attached, selecting any one of the alternatives 1A through D, which is the Inman Parkway Extension, as the city's preferred connector between Highway G and Highway S. Questions?
Move approval, Mr. President.
Sure, move by Vanda Bogart, second by Loopkey. All right, let's go ahead and get started with Counselor Vanda Bogart.
Can you outline roughly, and I know you can't be held directly to this, the various costs involved in the three options? It seems to me that the no-build option, bringing them all the way into the city and then north, is a costly option, because it will result in very rapid deterioration of already existing city infrastructure that has not been built to interstate standards and not been built to handle the loads. And so, what you're talking about really is a deferred cost onto the taxpayers of the city of Beloit that won't be known for two years, or five years, or 10 years, or something like that. And your other two, when you talk about Philhauer, you're going to have to acquire not only the right-of-way and the property, but you're going to have to relocate all those houses and people that live along Philhauer Road. Have people put a pencil and paper to this and figured out the costs?
That'll all be revealed on Monday night to everyone. I don't have the exact dollar values. The no-build is a misnomer, in my opinion. It just means that the corridors currently exist. It does not mean that there would not be costs incurred to bring them to design standards. The state of Wisconsin is not really interested in the participating in a no-build or that current existing roadways, corridors at this point. So, in honest, all honesty, there is, through the process of this, this is part of the public participation process required by the state and federal funding issues, and you always do a no-build. You do one or two alternate routes beyond the no-build. The no-build falls away, in my opinion, because it does not meet the project's purpose and need, and that's what they're determining, and they will express more of that at the meeting on Monday night as to all of that. I don't want to steal their thunder, they haven't actually given me the dollars. That would be a costly, lengthy route, and it doesn't really work well. The other two with Philhauer, yes, there will have to be at least two homes probably acquired with relocation, from the early stuff that I've looked at. I am not the lead agency on this, our city is not, so I only get snippets of pictures of how the progress is moving forward, but from the communications I have received, the land required between the Philhauer alternative and the alternatives 1A through D, the Inman Extension, for right-of-way acquisition falls within just a couple of tenths of an acre of each other, and I can't remember which one was more or less, but a couple of tenths of an acre is not a lot of land.
Well, as I understand, the manufacturing plant on County G, making the precast concrete, they're cranking out beams, concrete beams that are in excess of, I'm not sure, somebody said 100 feet long.
Really long ones, yes.
And to bring those, for example, all the way into the city of Beloit, making a turn onto Cranston Road, and then making another, you're talking major traffic impediments, it simply wouldn't work. You can't have 100-foot beam making these corners, 90-degree corners.
Right, and they probably would not be able to take their real exceptionally long ones that way. Let's hope those would all have to go north.
All right, well, thank you.
The other thing here, if I may, if you look at this alignment, these things were put together, these alternatives, by some people opposed to the project. They're not really workable the way they're shown. If the no-build option is the one that's ultimately approved, all of that traffic is going to come down Prairie Avenue to Cranston and stay on Cranston Road, all the way through the city of Beloit's residential neighborhoods, until they get to 81 Milwaukee Road, and they'll get on the interstate at that location. And I hope that, you know, our residents take note of that. Monday night is your opportunity, 6 to 8, to come out to this briefing session. County officials will be there, the design people will be there. I don't know if anybody in the state will be there or not.
There's always...
There's always a project manager.
Of some sort, and that might be the management consultant instead of the true state representative, but it's hired by the state to hear their voices.
Opportunity to voice your concern about that plan, to dump all that additional fairly heavy truck traffic into the city's residential neighborhoods, when there's an opportunity here to build a linkage with a pretty direct tie into this area that would serve this new manufacturer well, and would be a direct tie to the interstate at, just dropped the name.
Shopeer Road.
Shopeer, thank you.
Your bet.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. Mr. Flash, do you have any idea of approximately how many acres of land would need to be acquired that's currently being used in performing for the Inman option?
No, I don't have that, but they will have that there on Monday night. They have, they will have a matrix of comparisons of the three alternatives, and all of that will be presented, I'm quite sure. If not, they can answer that question.
Okay, which leads me to a question...
I will ask that Monday for you and get back to you.
Thank you, or I will ask it.
If you're there, then you can do it yourself.
Which leads me to a question that I asked you earlier, too. Because a lot of this information is coming later, is there a reason why we have to make this decision now? Why can't we wait till after that meeting, have all the information in front of us, and make a better informed decision?
Well, we need to go in as, well, I guess in my opinion, my professional opinion, given all the transportation aspects and everything else, the one stellar alternative is the Inman Extension for our community. The issue at hand is what is best for us, for our community and our constituents, and to have that voice so that we can be heard loud and clear through that process. They will, you're allowed to send back in comments, but the period of time is short. So, for us to be able to have that be entered into the official records of the project, we need to have it now, or we'd be beyond the comment period for that meeting.
I mean, I do understand, you know, that in this position here, my primary concern is for the residents of the city, but, you know, we keep talking about collaboration and taking a more regional approach. I do want to work with our neighbors to figure out if there's ways that we can tackle this that are win-win, not only for just thinking about the city of Beloit, but thinking about our neighbors and what their needs and concerns are. I mean, could you share some of the objections they've raised to this option? Is there a way that we can work with them to...
Sure, probably not, but we try. The biggest objection is farmland preservation, and like I said, the difference between an existing corridor and a new corridor is a couple of tenths of an acre, knowing that there's 43,000 square feet in an acre, a little bit more than that. A tenth of an acre is like 4,000 square feet, a big house. We're talking very, very minimal differences in land acquisition. Put on a Metropolitan Planning Organization hat, which is very much in support of that from the regional aspect, and it's been discussed at many, many different meetings at the MPO. The town of Turtle has always been very negative because they didn't want to have any farmland impacted, but one of the problems with our community is you can't seem to be able to get there from here, from a traffic standpoint, from a roadway corridor standpoint, and it was prior generations' shortsightedness on not reserving corridors. Get me, don't get me wrong, they had the foresight in 1970 to reserve this corridor, to afford us that opportunity to build it now when the money is available. And from a traffic engineering standpoint, you want major arterials and minor arterials about a mile to a half mile apart, majors a mile apart, minors a half mile in between to collect them. This is the next logical location for this. If you look at our overall map on the city of Beloit, we have a connector that goes from where this one will hit Shopeer, over to meet with Freeman Parkway Extended North, and connect almost an inner, you know, and the next inner loop between the interstate to get people from point A to point B. So, it's really an integral part of our long-term transportation planning. It's not a shortsighted knee-jerk reaction to have something be made just because it doesn't make sense. I mean, there was a lot of thought in modeling that went into this as a potential corridor before we even received total funding, and it's been on. Will we make them happy? Probably not. Will the generations beyond us thank us? Probably so. And it's a hard one, and we need to plan for our future so we can make it be good for those that follow.
Is there any possibility that if we were to choose the no-build option, that we could, we could get some of those costs from some of the partners in the area? I mean, is that really going to fall on the city of Beloit?
It would fall on the city of Beloit.
Obviously, we'll be taking the brunt of the deterioration of our roads.
It would fall totally on us. The town of Turtle, the town of Beloit, don't even want to participate in this one. We volunteered to participate with the Inman Extension to the extent that it was within our community, the one-third of it length that was in our community, to pay a portion of the local share. Right now, we're looking at, I believe it's 80/20 or 70/30 funding. I think it is 70/30, right Larry?
I believe.
I believe it's a 70/30 funding, 70% state and federal, 30% local, and we pay one-third of the local share. That's pretty amazing for what we will have as a potential benefit in the future.
All right, thank you.
Should be noted also that we have explained to the town of Turtle officials that this is going to be a rural, lettered county road, a two-lane rural cross-section. There'll be no water, no sewer utilities put in here.
Not even streetlights.
The purpose for this connector is exactly that, to connect to both that new concrete casting operation up in the town of Turtle. Also, there's a lot of other truck traffic that uses this routing coming out of the various material yards and quarries that are in operation up in that area, and it provides a better, improved access to the Beloit Hospital, to the commercial properties that operate in the north end of Beloit along Prairie Avenue, and also improves, or creates substantially improved access to the town of Beloit's business district as well. All of their industry, all their major businesses are located primarily south of Inman Parkway, and that business park, our corridor, they will also get improved access by this routing.
Counselor DeForest, did you have any comments?
Sorry, I just have one more question. I want to make sure for clarification that the city is blocked from annexing this area. Is that correct? I just want to make sure...
We have a boundary agreement with the town of Turtle, and that's included in the boundary agreement, which will not expire until 2022-ish.
Something like that, it's got about...
Well, just under 10 years, just under 10 years, I think.
I think it was extended in '02, or, yeah, '22 it runs out.
I think it's '22 that it runs out.
'21 or '22. Yeah, we're precluded from annexing property, which is another thing that makes no sense. Their primary concern is that we're going to build a new road, which is going to lead to development, okay? And that if development were to occur in that area, we'd have to annex into the city in order to obtain sewer service. That's what they're frightened of.
May I interject?
If we had, you know, first of all, we have hundreds of acres of land where we have industrial quality streets, not rural roads, where we have water and sewer already built in and placed, that we've invested in, where we have the land all properly zoned, annexed, we own a lot of it through our, the Greater Beloit Industrial Development Corporation. We don't need more land for business development. We've got all of that much better positioned than this parcel, all right? We don't know for sure what's going to happen here in the future, they don't either, and that's the bottom line. That's what they're fearful of, is that heaven forbid, the evil city might go out and recruit business and create jobs in this particular part of the community. I don't think that's going to happen. It's prohibited by our annexation agreement at this time. The road is not being built to support that kind of development, and if that ever occurred up there, would require a huge additional expenditure to upgrade that to industrial standard, to put in all the utilities to support it. So, it's basically a non-issue, but that's what they're frightened of, and they believe that if that road goes in, there's a good possibility that someday that will develop.
Mr. Flash, did you want to...
Yeah, as another, and as another aspect of the design and acquisition of right-of-way for that corridor, it will be access controlled, which means that you're not going to see a driveway every 200 feet, 100 feet, 300 feet. It'll be only allowed to come in off of connecting streets that would be built to support any development of lands beyond the roadway corridor. So, and those are almost predetermined as part of the design because of site distances, et cetera. So, the property owners on either side of the remaining, you know, of the new corridor right-of-way would have to sell off a large chunk and build the infrastructure to provide that access. They will not be allowed a driveway, they will have to access on streets by the way this is being set up, and that's to help protect against little parcels being cut off and developed and having, the whole purpose of this was to be a people and goods mover.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we have that fear addressed.
You bet. I mean, we've tried very hard to make sure that those concerns were addressed, and that's why we're not doing any extension of sewer and water, or even street lighting, except for at the intersections, so...
Thank you.
Their voices are heard.
Counselor Kincaid.
It appears that no matter what we offer to do to accommodate them, we're not getting any cooperation whatsoever.
That would appear that way, yes.
Why would we cooperate with them, then?
Because it makes sense for some of the things that we're offering to them, makes sense for us in the long term, too, like the controlled access, et cetera, because it'll be make it better for our citizens in the future when development does occur.
So, they do get something out of it.
You bet, in some, in some future date.
As long as the corridor that we prefer.
Right, as long as it's the Inman Parkway Extension, that's why we want to have our voice be heard and taken into account, because they've been out championing their position where we've been relatively quiet and reserved, and kept it to the very technical aspects. Now, it's time for us, in my opinion, to voice our political voice, too. Yours.
Would the residents of the township... Would the residents of the township or the, those who are administering it, would they agree or like the idea of being able to subdivide five acres here or there for, I would think the farmers might like to, they send their kid to college or whatever?
I, they are corporate farms, they're not the family farm, so it's hard to have an opinion.
I'm not suggesting that is a good thing, believe me, I'm just really wondering where the, where the landowners are coming from.
I cannot express more than, they say it's going to be farmed.
Okay, thank you.
I'll put in my, my two cents worth, and I'll go ahead and talk about the 800-pound grill in the room. Their objections are breathless hysteria and paranoia. This, this makes sense for, for us, you know, asking the taxpayers of the city of Beloit to bear the entire brunt of deteriorating streets just so that the, just to assuage the, the terror of, of the Town of Turtle is unacceptable. Do we have any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call the issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Item 11E.
A resolution awarding the classification and compensation study and pay plan development contract.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. The resolution that you're considering this evening for paying classification study really is culmination of an event we sent out an RFP recently to consulting firms to take a look at the city's paying classification study, which has been in place since the late 1990s. It's about 15 years old. It currently covers only the city's non-union represented employees, and as you know, as a result of some changes that took place last year with the state budget, a number of our employees now are no longer union members and are going to become incorporated into our non-represented pay plan. And because of that, and also in, as a result of the age of the current paying classification plan, we felt it's imperative to have somebody take a professional look at the current plan. It needs to be updated, and we did receive proposals from four consultants to do that. We had a committee that was put together to meet with the consultants that submitted proposals, interviewed them, and as a result of that process, they have recommended the proposal from McGrath Incorporated as being the proposal that best meets the needs of the city to conduct this study, and they have agreed to perform their work for a little bit less than $15,000. We do have sufficient funds in our human resources department budget this year that can accommodate this, and we're recommending the city council authorize us to enter into a contact, contract with McGrath to perform the required work. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any motion to approve?
I approve.
Right, sir, and seconded by Loukey. Counselor Vanderbilt.
Why such, if you, if you know, why such a disseparate level of quotes on the request for proposals, all the way from $15,000 up to $45,000? And then the second question is, how does this mesh, or does this mesh with our handbook that we're going to be reviewing in a week or so? Our employee handbook, does it? Is there a conflict, or does it work with it?
Well, the first question I really can't address. I wasn't part of the group that, that interviewed the firm, so I'm not sure why there's, you know, such a large disparity as far as the price of the contract.
Well, you want to introduce the consultant?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Dr. McGrath is here this evening. She's the head of the consulting firm and.
Well, I'll ask her the question. Ma'am, you're about three times lower than the other folks. How come?
I like Beloit. No, I have been doing consulting for almost 10 years, 12 years now. When I did initially bid the price, we were in the upper twenties, a little bit low thirties. However, I'm fully aware that there have been numerous compensation studies done throughout the region. I know what those went for, and so I bid it competitively with what other firms have been doing within this area in order to ascertain the city of Beloit. Would I like to get more assurance? If you want to vote for it, that's fine with me, but right now, our price is the price, and we have never increased a price once we have a signed contract.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the second half of your question.
Yeah, how does it work with the employee handbook that we're going to be looking at next week?
It's really a separate issue, basically. That's really our personnel policy handbook. I mean, there, there could be, you know, some influence that that exerts over the study, but primarily that's to cover essentially how employees are supervised, the rules of employment for the city, what have you. This is purely to look at our, our positions, the pay associated with those positions, with the work that's being performed, and how we compare not only internally among all the departments for similar type positions, but, but also externally with employers that we have to compete with.
Also, if I may, the personnel manual that you're going to be reviewing next week envisions this pay study being done. It basically locks in place the three existing pay plans that we have for what are now our non-represented employees. We have the non-represented plan that's referred to in the manual, and then there are two step plans that the unions were using. The manual then goes on to indicate that the new plan, once prepared and adopted, would be implemented January the 1st of 2013. So the manual envisions this work being done and the plan being prepared this fall for implementation with the new budget cycle. Obviously, we would not do this in a mid-year situation under any circumstances. So that's the timeline, that's the way the two will work together.
Thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. My question, for the most part, was answered because I know there was a reference that the, the consultant would also provide recommendations on rewarding employee performance, and so I'm assuming then, we haven't seen the handbook yet, that the merit pay aspect of it will be quite vague, or are we, are we waiting for recommendations on how to handle things like merit pay, or?
Well, we haven't started work on the contract yet.
Right.
I think we should let the consultant come in, do the comparables, let's see where the salary plan, how it, it comes together, and then we'll present that to council as soon as we have an outline of what's, you know, what's workable, what solves our problems. We have two issues here. We've got a pay plan that's 15 years old that has not been reworked in a decade and a half, and we've got 155, give or take, formerly unionized employees that are going to be integrating into that plan. So it's going to take a good deal of work to mesh all of that together, to do the horizontal and vertical comparables, make sure the plan works not only within the departments but across all the city departments, and so that's what the study is all about. That's why we're using a consultant.
Counselor Kincaid.
Mr. York, with the wide range of bids, are you satisfied that the $15,000 bid is delivering the same level of services as was proposed on the $45,000?
I don't see anything that would indicate otherwise. You know, again, we, we did issue an RFP, all the firms, I think there was only one firm that actually wasn't interviewed by the committee. The, the committee made a choice based on what services the city was interested in, and they felt that McGrath, you know, had the qualifications to perform the work as we specified. And, and as you've heard this evening, the consultant believes that they can do that.
Did the consultants respond to a specific RFP?
Yes.
Yes, they did, and we have written responses that will be the basis for the contract. The entire scope of services that McGrath will be performing is all laid out in that document, and it's very similar to the, to the work approach or process that would be used by the other consultants. A couple of things here. One is some of the firms are fairly large, they have a lot of overhead, the McGrath firm is relatively small, and I believe by looking at the office that's in your home.
Yes.
There's, there's some consultants that work for you on a part-time basis who are fully employed, so they do not have a lot of full-time employees benefit costs, and there were overhead issues that allowed them to give us a more competitive price. When we looked at it, we thought they underpriced their work as well a little bit, but again, it's the different structure. When you look at Springsteen Incorporated, who's a very, very good firm, have a great reputation in Wisconsin, but this is a big firm with downtown presence, they have very expensive office space, they have a lot of full-time employees, and there's no way a firm without carrying that kind of overhead could compete with a smaller independent firm. But yes, we've reviewed, we've reviewed all the qualifications, we've checked references, we've looked at other cities McGrath has done work for, they checked out very, very highly, and again, we have a detailed written scope of services part of their proposal.
I'm, it appears to me, having done a little consulting myself over the years, that you've squeezed pretty hard. You, you include all travel expenses, time, materials, and all other expenses that I guess you'd recommend it.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 6-0. Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
Thanks. Thank you very much for coming up this evening.
Item 11F.
A resolution authorizing an agreement with Beloit College for the operation of the city's public education, educational, and governmental cable access channel and studio.
Mr. York.
As you know, the city's contracted for a number of years with Beloit College to provide the, our PEG access channel programming for our city council meetings on Tuesday nights. They also offer the community an opportunity for, to present various programs on the PEG channel that you wouldn't typically find on a normal TV channel, a cable channel. They also operate our cable access studio. It's actually an educational program that the, the college is involved with, with some of the students, and they do quite a bit of programming in the studio. We actually have a Beloit Today program that the city actually produces that's shown through the cable access studio. The current agreement that we have with the college expires at the end of this year. They approached us a month or so ago with the interest of going ahead and getting the contract renewed upon expiration at the end of this year. The college has seen the agreement, they've signed off on it, and we would certainly like to continue this arrangement that we currently have with the college and continue the agreement for an additional five-year period. So it would run from January 1, 2013, to the end of December 2017 is the term on the new agreement with the college. And any questions you may have, I'll be glad to try to address those.
Do I have a motion? Counselor DeForest? Seconded by Loukey. Any questions? Counselor Vanderbilt.
One of my early assignments in my council career was on the Cable TV Access Committee, as you recall. When they went to statewide regulation and the local regulation dropped away as ineffective and not needed, there was some suggestion by the big cable companies that they were moving to eliminate PEG programming across the country. I have not kept up on it. Have you heard anything? Are they going to be phasing PEG programming out of their, their offerings in general? We have charter generally, but with all the other potentials that are there, DirecTV among them, has there been any discussion? Is PEG going up in popularity or going down, or staying the same, or are we, are we going to be out of business there shortly?
I'm not aware of any movement by the state or charter to eliminate it. Actually, the new state statute that was enacted a few years ago that allowed the state to do the franchising for the cable companies actually provides for them, for the PEG channels through the state statute. So, so it actually preserved our ability to continue offering these type of services through the state statute. And as far as I know, the state would have to amend that statute in order to eliminate that service. I guess charter could go out of business entirely, and we wouldn't have it, but, you know, I'm certainly not aware of any, anything like that.
Well, the lobbying that takes place, as you recall, they referred to it as the bill from AT&amp;T, I think, was the, was the.
Right.
Moniker on it, and there was quite a bit of discussion about how it affected the rates and competition, et cetera.
Sure.
So it could be gone like that, if, if they wanted it to be.
Well, and AT&amp;T really hasn't become a major player in the city as far as the TV services that they offer. There's, I don't know, 1,000 or 1,200 or so customers, I think, in, in the city that have the AT&amp;T service, but predominantly our cable is provided by charter here in the city. And I haven't heard anything on, as far as they're concerned about potentially eliminating the PEG access.
Thank you.
Counselor DeForest.
Thank you. My question is related a bit to the, what I perceive as maybe uncertainty about the future, unfortunately, of PEG access. I mean, is there a reason why we're doing a five-year contract and not a contract with a shorter duration?
The five year is typically the period that we've always used with the college for this, this agreement. I don't know if there's anything magic about it, it's what the city's always done in the past with the.
Great, thank you.
Mr. York, is there a termination clause in the contract?
Yes.
Okay, so if they pull the plug on it, we could stop it.
Well, and there's also some language in there, and the charter does, you know, cease, you know, business, what have you, what happens, you know, under this agreement, too, so.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Issue passes 6-0.
Mr. President, I abstained.
Oh, excuse me, I apologize, it was, it was five with one abstention.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Anyway, item number 12 is adjournment. Any, moved by DeForest. Okay.
Second.
Okay, Kincaid, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Zero. You are adjourned.